We're all here, all ready to proceed? Okay. Ladies, take it away.
Thanks, everyone. As you know, Dr. Gabriel tasked Tanya and myself with bringing all the information together as we start updating and revising our accountability plan, and we're talking about this at the school board level. So, we've been working very hard. We're very fortunate to have Karen and Dennis, who, the data that we requested, they brought it all together, they put it under our goals, and that's what you have, that hopefully everyone's had a chance to familiarize themselves with the information. You'll notice that it's tied to the particular goals that the board is currently operating under. And so, that's why you have this. It's a reference that you can refer to if you have a question about some of the things we're talking about. So, basically, we're going to do three areas today. We're going to start with looking at our goals and priorities. And that was one of the reasons we wanted you to, you know, be familiar with the current data from 2018, not just the SOL data, but all of the other, for the goals for school security, climate, goal two, and then for goal three, which is engagement. So, what we're going to start with is, we're going to start with this, and you should have, if you open the folder I just gave you, take off that top page, and you'll get a packet that has the goals and the priorities in it, so you have them on the front of you. Priorities at the top, goals at the bottom. So, this is what we're going to start with. Thinking about the data, and we've seen it, we've been looking at it for six months from 2018, what's current, what's happening in our school system right now as far as student achievement, and indicators like our very deep conversation that we just had about absenteeism, and those, you know, that fall under different goals. So, we're going to start by deciding, is this where we still are? Is this what we could still consider our goals and our priorities? The three goals are pretty consistent across districts across the country. Basically, we look at increasing student achievement because that's why we have schools. We look at keeping our schools safe and secure, having good climates, the types of things that we have in goal two, and then we look at always trying to engage our community and our parents, here in Norfolk, our military, and that's goal three. Those are pretty typical, so we're going to start by looking at those three goals, and as the team decide, are these still the three goals that the board will be looking at? And if they are, how are we with wording? For example, if I look at the first one, improve student academic achievement, I notice that everything here is a noun. That was one of the things I noticed. And so, I kind of like action sentences, and so I put a verb there to make it, so, for example, improve student academic achievement, I put increase student academic achievement. But, on my own planning sheet, not saying, you know, that was just a verb, because I think Tanya had a different verb. She went to a verb too, which is sort of, what did you say?
I had increased.
Oh, oh, so, oh, okay. See, our minds are starting to merge. We've been spending a lot of time together, and Tanya's going, "Oh, please, God, not that." But, anyway, that's what I'm talking about. So, what we want to have is kind of have a discussion around, among the governance team, and we may be asking some of our experts in the room also. Let's start with the goals and make sure that we're satisfied with the goals. We don't want to spend forever on this, because we have some more, when we get into the plan, it's going to take a lot more time. And then, looking at what we've talked about, for example, we just had a long conversation about attendance, and now that's a big indicator for accreditation at the state level, it's a big indicator at the federal level. You know, is that something that now rises to a priority rather than an indicator? Thinking about the difference, the indicators are all these things we have in here, which ones rise to the level of priority? So, let's look at improved, improved student achievement. I think it actually had outcomes on the original one, so that's not on here, but...
Yeah. It had improved student achievement and outcomes.
Outcomes.
And outcomes.
Right. I probably, I think, when I typed this ages ago, I must have left it off, because I didn't quite get the outcomes part, but should not have been making any changes on my own. So, let's, does anyone, first of all, how do you feel about having that as our number one goal?
Rodney?
So, just one point. So, the school board goals that you have here, that you pulled out on this page, were actually being tied to the accountability plan, because we were just trying to group some things. So, when you look at the overarching matter of fact, what's up there on that screen, you'll see on the top left, it has the seven school board priorities. As we were working on the, and then to the right, you have strategic plan, strategies. So, when we were working on the accountability system for the board piece, we just used school board goals as a grouping mechanism, because as we worked with the administration, in our effort to try to kind of wrap ourselves around the framework, that's why you had those three school board goals. It wasn't something, it wasn't something where we were saying, "These are just the school board goals." They were just being used to help provide a framing mechanism for the school board's accountability plan. So, I just want to make sure there's...
And that's interesting, because they were always the goals that we had.
I'm just sharing...
And maybe that's why, because it all comes up.
Sharing how we did.
And that's good, good information. So, I'm sorry, Melinda, go ahead.
I'd say, also, when the district in the early 2000s developed this comprehensive accountability system, these were the three overarching goals that we were focused on. And so, that, as you have attached here, is very well researched base, and again, what you've seen develop over time is that the federal government and states have also adopted those as being the critical areas, because when you look at the school quality profiles and the work we just did, there are the achievement indicators, and then there are the student engagement indicators, and so they fall right within this.
Right. It's pretty much universal. That doesn't mean that this board can't do something differently. We're just, we're here to have a discussion with the board about it. So, why don't we, how about we do what we were thinking we were going to do with the priorities, and go through these, see yays or nays or changes, or additions, you know, what, how you feel about it? Because you've all had a chance, I mean, we've reviewed and reviewed all this kind of data, and then it's all brought together for us in the notebooks that you got back before Christmas. So, let's try that, let's start with that, because I think, as Dr. Bunn has shared with us, they are pretty universal, but once again, this is the Norfolk School Board, and we're not, you know, locked in to anything. It needs to be what the team decides works best for them.
I don't, so, when I was thinking about the goals, I agree with goal number one. I like, I like putting a verb there, increase student academic achievement and outcomes. I like that. I also had written down, not that I disagree with, safe and secure 21st century learning environments, but I kind of, I had grouped increased student academic achievement outcomes in a safe learning environment. That was a thought that I had had. And then, another goal would have been every child to have access to a high-quality educational program.
So, those would have been the three goals you would have put instead of these three? Is that what you're saying, or...
Well, my suggestions for number one, I'm fine with that. Increase student academic achievement and outcomes. And then, another goal that is not here, but one that I was thinking of on my own, not married to it, but every child to have access to a high-quality educational program, that was one. And then, another one that I had had was Norfolk Public Schools as a desirable division for families to send children and for employment. That's just what I was thinking.
Well, let me just throw something out. A goal needs to be measurable. Okay, so, how do we measure that? That's like, that's like, we're going to create lifelong learners? That's great, and that's exactly what we hope we're doing, but we need to be able to measure, unless someone...
I'm not married to them. That was just some of the things, and I'm just throwing it out there.
And that's okay, that's what we're doing, and I'm writing them down.
Well, I'm going to speak up on the increased, and I really like improve, because increase outcomes, you want them to be positive outcomes, so, moving in a positive direction.
How would you feel about it being improve rather than improved? Improved as an adjective here?
I like the idea of verbs, these need to be verbs.
Oh, okay, so, just take the deal.
Yeah, these are actionable items.
I don't have any problem with that. I mean, that's fine with me.
Improve, okay.
It's just, yeah. How does everyone else feel about that?
To improve?
Oh, yeah, improve instead of improved. Improved made it a noun statement, now we have an action verb. How does everyone feel about the word outcomes?
Well, I think that outcomes ties in with the lifelong learner, so the long-term application of what they're learning in, you know, continually.
Do you like, okay, yeah, okay, well, then, let's...
I like the whole child approach that we've been taking, and would like to continue with that focus, so I think outcomes...
So, at this point, we're kind of at improved student academic achievement and outcomes. Okay.
There's life beyond graduation.
Yeah. What? There's life after graduation? I didn't feel that way when I was in high school. Okay.
And here you are.
I'm not sitting in the White House running the country.
We're back at school.
Okay. Safe and secure 21st century environments. The verb that I put there was, if I remember it, ensure, and I think Tanya was thinking about provide, and, and we were thinking about, do we need 21st century environments anymore? We're so far into the century now.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, we're like, I mean, that would have, I mean, we've had it before, but we were kind of in a new century. I mean, this century's getting old already.
Yeah.
So, how does everyone feel about that? And any other verb suggestions besides the two that we had, which was ensure and provide?
I'm going to say, I like ensure, because we are not the only ones, we're relying on a network that's outside of NPS, so by ensuring that we maintain that network, you know, with cybersecurity, I mean, some of it's done in-house, but we just talked at our safety and security task force meeting about how Mr. Walker works with the Norfolk Public, Norfolk Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and other community members to make sure that we have safe environments. And of course, that also includes facilities, and so I think that's something that we can't solely provide, we can't live up to that, and so as a goal, it would have to be to ensure that we are moving that forward.
Okay, any other?
Yeah. So, based on the data that we've been reviewing, I had changed it to read ensure safe, safe, caring, and healthy learning environments. So, based on our climate survey data, our recently approved policies around health and wellness, and caring, again, tied to the climate survey data, and what some of that information is telling us, that we need to put some focus.
How does everyone feel about that? So, it's safe, caring, healthy. Do you want to take secure out?
I had, I had taken out secure in 21st century.
Oh, 21st century.
I'm all for taking out 21st century.
Yeah. I'm with you.
My concern about that is, is while I agree that, from a time standpoint, we are into the 21st century, I don't necessarily agree that we have, we have reached 21st century learning environments yet.
Yeah. Well, I agree with that.
Because everyone isn't there with their monitor right in front of them.
No, I'm, no, I didn't mean, not even from a technology standpoint, I just mean in general. I know we're in 2019, but that doesn't mean that the school division is.
Well, I mean... And that's a good point.
Right.
I'm just...
Right, and perhaps defining what it is that we mean by that is something...
How about the rest, what are the rest of the things?
Well, I was ready to move in the other direction, but thank you, Mr. Jordan, for popping that balloon and bringing us back here, because you're right, when we look at the average age of our facilities and buildings, that we are not there. But I did want to ask Ms. Bassin, if she could just elaborate a little bit more on the caring and healthy. I know you were saying with some of the things that there, but what was kind of your thinking behind that?
The trust between students and teachers. We want to be able to say that our students feel that teachers care about them, and one of the things that, you know, I've mentioned this before in previous meetings, that had kind of jumped out at me, is that that wasn't consistent across all of our schools. And, so, that's, if you look through that report, that will glean some of that, but also around, you know, bullying, inclusive, and diverse learning environments, I think, what do we mean by that? I think the caring piece is an important part of that.
And it's, I don't think it's just related to the students, but I think it's also employment as well.
And employees, yes, of course.
So, we want them to feel that they have, they're, they're working in a caring environment, that their needs are being listened to.
And if I could, that would also align with the school health and wellness policy.
Oh, that's a good point.
That's why it's good healthy.
That has been adopted by the board, and again, that continuity of, of the work around it.
And I like to have everything aligned, so that we're not going in opposite directions. So, that's a really good point.
And that's, that's what I was referencing with recent policies that we've passed around physical and mental health, not just for students, but for staff, and what we hope will be healthier facilities as we work on our capital improvement plans.
So, I guess what we, I know, because we want to try to keep the goals, you know, succinct, so will we add in the caring and healthy and bring back the 21st century?
Well, that's what, I agree wholeheartedly with the fact that we're, we are 2019, but we're not there. But, how else, I feel like putting 21st century out there is what, it's one of those phrases like, that we've kind of grown to, we use it, we throw it out there, but we, no one, you know, the group doesn't know what it means anymore. So, are we talking technology? Are we talking about even the way we teach and deliver instruction? I mean, it could, to me, that falls into a variety of areas, and not just around school climate and safety. You know, I think it's instruction, I think it's everything, you know, it's like, you know, how we set up our tables in our, you know, it can mean, it can mean, it means a variety of things to different people. So, unless we're going to define it somehow, and be able to say, "Okay, now we've achieved that learning environment," is the reason why I'm not hell-bent on keeping it in there. I think we need to, in our accountability plan development, and look at what we have, to really say, the things that we mean by that, are they in there? And I think that's where we've got to really outline what that is.
It seems to me that that should go under, well, part of it, especially with the education, that we're using current and innovative ways to educate our children, that would be under goal number one. And then, the safety and security, the facilities, modern facilities, would be under number two, and that's how we would address that, because I agree with you that, you know, taking 21st century out, and while I also agree that we're not there yet, to current standards or where we want to be, that you really, I think that it's, it seems, I don't know, maybe it's not obvious, but it seems intuitive to me to think that this is from now, like, we want to be current in everything that we're doing on here, and so to just put that out there seems a little kitschy, like, it's just like a little slogan.
Yeah, it's kind of like a gimmicky...
And not really have, bringing a lot of value to the statement.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I think this is where, you know, in our discussions about how to even set this up, you know, I personally, you know, I think when we go through the accountability plan, I think how it ties into the goal will make more sense, because you'll be able to see what we have in there that are the identified needs that are connected to that goal, and why that is a goal, and why it's the way that it is.
Yeah, it's probably school climate.
Yeah.
School climate, and goal two deals with climate, school climate and safety and...
And caring, yeah, and then part of the discussion in updating it may include other elements that are around more health and wellness too. So, it may, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Right, health and wellness is around climate.
But that could be, you know, that could be facilities.
Climate and that includes safety.
Yes.
The inclusiveness, that's, that's an important piece.
Right, and that is an important piece that we've been working hard on.
So, my hearing, ensure safe, healthy, and caring learning environments?
That's what I have. Ensure safe, caring, and healthy learning environments, is what I have. Does everyone, Rodney, are you going to be okay with that?
Oh.
Okay. Thank you. All right, goal three.
I'm still a little iffy on taking out secure, but I'm not completely...
I'm sorry, I asked Rodney, I didn't ask you.
That's okay. I mean, I like the idea of security and safety can be two different things.
Oh, well, I like secure in it too, so I would be, I'd be a person...
So, maybe that's enough, we can talk about that more than...
Put that in the parking lot.
Having both of them there.
Let's put that in the...
Yeah, put it in the parking lot. We could have titled something parking lot.
I don't have a sticket or a...
Girl.
Are they...
Got a bucket.
In the middle of the table.
So, we can, yeah, move it along. Actually, I'm with you on the secure part, but I'm being a compromiser to that. Why is everybody laughing when I say I'm being a compromiser? Watch it.
Miss Camp's idea of a...
You want to put 21st century?
No, no, I have, I just have a process question for you.
I was like, "I'm not going to hand you the candy dish." All right, let's look, Rodney has the floor.
So, I know, because as you've talked about needs assessments and so forth, in...
Well, that's the indicator, it could be indicator assessments.
In my, you know, as we've, having worked on past Norfolk Public Schools accountability systems, I, and I think what we tried to do before was looking at the performance data and where we were, and then have the discussion review of the data help to inform any goals and priorities. And to me, the process, I think it's good that we are doing this, I think when we go through the, the data and where we are, it may result in us, we could have three goals, five goals, no goals, I don't know, but I'm just saying that it would seem to me that we might have some benefit as you all move forward, walking us through the content with the recognition that that may then come back and change perspective on, on goals.
And I totally agree, because I'm, remember, I kept saying, I can't do anything until I get my needs and my data for the needs assessment, and, and that's why we were, that's why, I mean, these two guys, and ladies, were working so hard right before the break to get all the stuff together for needs assessment, so you'd have time to do some in-depth review. And certainly, I think that we hope that, hope that we will be, have another chance to really get into it. We did not choose to take all morning, all afternoon to do it now, because we wanted to get some things moving, so we could get moving on the accountability plan, but the accountability plan is a living document. You know, once we, what we finished with today, and maybe have to continue, because who knows how far we'll get, is it can be changed again as we continually review and look at changing data. I mean, the attendance data we looked at only goes through January, or probably December, since you got it now, so that'll, that may make changes in that too, because it's a living document. Our goal here was to, first of all, teach me the difference between board and superintendent responsibilities. Tanya has been working very hard to do that, and I really am understanding now, and when you see the, one of the accountability suggestions as we move into whether we need a different format, Dennis is really the architect of my transformation. I know Dr. Bunn's going to be so happy to hear. Anyway, so...
Number three.
Just jump up on the table and do a jig. Okay.
All right, number three.
So, let me just, to make sure we're all together. Ensure safe, caring, and healthy, and we're going to talk, we're going to revisit secure, because I'm with Adele on that. Learning environments.
Okay.
For now. Okay. So, now, the next one is community and parent engagement, and I'll just tell you what I do, and then we can feed off that. I put increase, and I'm not sure increase is ever the best word either. We did not have a priority under this, by the way. Rodney sent a nice list of indicators, if you had a chance to check your email yet, you'll see that he sent us some good indicators that might help us as we work to at least get one priority under that. I put, and I expanded it from parent and community, I put increased parent, community. I added military, because this is Norfolk, Virginia, and we have tons of military partners. They're not on the big master list, but individual schools have them, and businesses that we work with. So, I put, and this is just my suggestion, increase parent, community, military, and business engagement. And so, if everyone can kind of jump in now and see, first of all, the word increase is so overused.
I have seek and facilitate. Seek and facilitate community and parent engagement.
That's good. How can we make it measurable?
By tracking it.
Well, yeah, but I mean...
I know, but what is our goal? So, how much more do we, are you wanting to put percentages on it?
Well, I was going to put percentages, or not percentages, but an increase, that's why I want to use increase in the goal. I just couldn't think of another verb right then. And I also have a priority I'm going to suggest, you know, in a minute, but I'm going to write that down. Say it again, so I can write it down.
Seek and facilitate?
Seek. And that might be more of an action, because, because, remember, we're putting, we're, hopefully, I'm correct now, Coach, that we will be giving the superintendent what we want done, you know, like, 100% of the schools are credited, and then she will be determining how she goes about getting it done. And seeking and facilitating kind of sounds like it might be, I can't, I don't want to make Melinda faint over here, but it seems like that that's her, how we, how we increase it, or whatever word we use, that engagement, that would be for her to come back and say, "This is my plan for increasing it." How does everyone else feel about that?
I mean, I like, increase is fine, but I think what I would like to be included is that we're proactive in it, that we're not waiting for it to come to us.
Okay, so, let's think of how we can word it to get that feeling in. Any ideas? Any?
Well, a couple of things. One, I would hope we were doing this together, and that's not just the board telling me, because as a governance team, I should be part of...
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
...put that overarching piece. The second piece, I pulled up, looked up synonyms for increase.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And, thinking about what Adele just said, expand community and parent engagement.
Ooh, I like it. How's that, are you okay with that one?
Because it exists.
Because it exists, exactly.
It does, it's already in place.
And you will know that part of my entry plan was to reengage with the military in a significant way, and that's the work that Dr. Bursong is doing with our, Dr. Bailey's worked also with the two Department of Defense grants, and so I think it's a way of looking to go beyond where we are. Let's continue to expand and deepen. I don't think deepen works in a, in a goal, but with that mindset.
Yeah, I agree with you. I had strengthen, because I know it exists.
Oh, yes.
And, and, but expand is even better, because...
And, and not just community, but community stakeholders, people who are, who we need to bring into the fold, who...
Yeah, that's why I actually wanted military brought into it, and businesses.
So, as the, as our goal, you know, community stakeholders, and then, under, under the actionable items would be the different stakeholders that we identify.
All right, so, wait, wait, let me make sure I'm understanding, because what I just written down was expand parent, community, military, and business engagement. It sounds like you're saying something differently.
Community stakeholders.
Yeah.
Do you like that better?
And the reason why I agree with community stakeholders is that we may put ourselves on a whole in respect, because I see a big group that's missing out of there, our faith base, I mean, our alumni, I mean, so I think when we say community stakeholders, anyone who has a...
Identify those as our...
Yeah.
And that would be, that would come as we get further down.
Mm-hmm, and then you can kind of spell it out, it's the different groups.
So, now what I have, everyone, see if anyone has, I have now expand community stakeholder engagement.
And, well, we, and, well, so then, if we, because I like the idea of pulling out... out parent, but do we say a parent and guardian, because that's how we, just to be succinct with how we, our other language that we're using, and other, how we address.
I thought we eliminated all of those.
Well, I, I don't want to, my personal opinion is to not eliminate family, and family, we just, this is, we recently, you know, passed a family engagement policy that was district-wide, not just the one that is used for Title I requirements, and we defined there as parent guardian, because we had, you know, a lot of discussion around that, around defining it, so.
Family engagement.
Um, family engagement has been a huge.
Stakeholder and family engagement.
Well, it's a. Family rather than parent.
Family, yeah.
I, I think it's important that you leave family or parent in it.
And it aligns with our policy. I had something a little bit different, but inclusive of what Mr. Clanton included, but expand partnerships with families, business, and community organizations, we can include faith-based organizations, to provide a system of support and care for every child in the division. But we could get into, we could just leave it at engagement, you know, and then.
I like engagement, because engagement covers everything.
It has to fit on a small sticky note.
Five words limit.
Yeah, five words, just saying engagement, okay.
So, so now, it sounds like what, it sounds like what you're saying is expand family and stakeholder engagement.
I like community stakeholder, can we, expand community stakeholder and family engagement.
All right, you want to say community stakeholders before family?
Rodney has a suggestion.
Just a question in the comments, so are these, what's the time, are we, it's a one-year, two-year, these goals, or we think, what's the time?
I'm looking at, we were looking at a five-year, five-year, you know, living document that you can change any time.
The targets, but I think we're going to, our goal is to review the accountability plan every year.
Oh, absolutely.
So the reason, the reason I ask is, in principle, I agree with the concept of expansion and increasing, but in a short-term timeframe, I don't know if I do. So one of the things that we had included in the existing accountability plan was evaluation of certain partnerships, and doing an assessment of the partnerships that exist, so we could very well find that we don't want to expand some partnerships, some partnerships may not be produced. Just follow me, just follow me.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm just saying, so, when we had it as a noun, when we went into the needs and the strategies within the accountability system, that's where we were putting these action items and strategies. My, it's not something I'm trying to, you know, fight over, but I think if we put in there expand, then, then it puts us in a position where we get down deeper, then everything should then be aligning with expansion. But what happens if we get in there and we decide that there are some things we want to subtract, just like we talked about taking things off the plate? So I just put that out there for consideration, as we consider expand as an action word tied to a goal, without some time put on it.
Develop meaningful.
Because if we were doing this for one year, if we were doing this for the rest of the year, I don't know if I would do expand. If we were doing five years, I might see expand.
And that's, but I think that's our vision, is that it's five years, and then, but, but with changes every year, because it's a living document.
Right.
When I'm thinking of.
Where they identify needs within it.
Because when I'm thinking of, see, we have a lot more partnerships than we realize, because we have the ones that you got in your tablet here, which were the big, major ones that come through, but every school in this district has half a dozen at least little partnerships, that, so we have a lot more than we think, and they come and go, the littler ones, a lot, especially, you know, sometimes military, you have a ship, and then it is deployed, and by the time it gets back, it has a new captain, it may not be a priority for that captain, so things change and ebb and flow, but where we go, we have a target, you know.
Right, but you're, you're, you're working on my point, that in the absence of knowing what exists, and in, in the equity policy, one of the things that we asked for is a school-by-school identification of those partnerships, so I'm saying, having that data assessment review helps to then inform what your goals are, is all I was trying to say.
And it could be that for the first year, our target would be the assessment.
The assessment.
We do, we did that year one, would be what would go under here, and then year two would be where we, and, you know, what do we have? Because we don't know what we have anymore, because we just have the big group that, that mostly came through the foundation, that's where they were, but, and at each school level, they have a lot more that we have not been tracking, so that could be, we could have our goal, and year one would be, let's, let's see what we already have, and then we can determine how many more we want to add, like, two-point, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Christine.
If we just move engage to the front of it, engage community, family, stakeholders, would that accomplish what we're assessing?
And probably just something at the end of it, engage community stakeholders, fam, business, and family, whatever that is, in something, yeah.
Measure that, put some gold, something.
Yeah, because you can, we'd have to.
Different types.
Is everybody starting to feel more along that line? That, that's not my first choice, but I'm, you know, because I want, when I think of a goal, I need, I don't know, I need to know, if I'm putting it down here as a goal, where am I in getting there?
I kind of like strengthen, actually.
Because then it shows that there's something already in place.
Engagement as far as whether you've got.
Tactics, that'll make it better.
What, what, how you're measuring.
So, so our choices are, so what we, what I wrote down first was expand community stakeholder and family engagement.
Right.
Okay, and now what we're trying to, so one of the other suggestions was strengthen community stakeholder and family engagement, and then Christine has suggested.
Engage.
Engage with, tell me, tell me how you would word the sentence.
Community and family stakeholders.
Engage with community and family stakeholders.
Disengage.
Engage, strengthen, expand, or, and I think strengthen and, and engage are kind of one train of thought.
Yeah.
And expand is another train of thought, so I think that's where we are, how do you, you know, where I am is, I'd like to be able to have something I can measure, because it's a goal.
I personally like the strengthen one, because then the expansion could become a tactic that's a part of the overall strengthening.
And we can always change the verb.
And reducing.
And reducing, or realigning, I mean, but, overall, the ultimate thing is to strengthen that focus.
Yeah, because you want to get as much engagement as you can.
Strengthen meaningful partnerships or something. Yeah, it's really about, like, meaningful, it's really about relationships.
Are those partnerships translating into positive outcomes for children?
Exactly, yeah.
And that's what, we want to, we want to be working towards something that's.
The more help we get from our community, the better the kids do.
Yeah.
Right, we want to, but we want to be able to, to see how we're doing to expand it, because, you know, do we have enough, there's never enough help.
Strengthen.
We, the schools need, we all need all the help we can get in our schools, even any school, wherever they are in the performance scale, they need help. So how are you reading it, because I need to make sure I have, so what is everyone thinking? I still like expand, you like strengthen, strengthen.
Strengthen meaningful partnerships.
Christine kind of more, are you, how, are you?
That's fine.
How about we over here? Rodney, we're really addressing your concern. We're really addressing your concern, what are you fine with?
Whatever is fine, I just reserve the right after we get to the data to come back.
Come back and change yours.
That's, of course.
Okay, so, all right, so let me make sure I've got it correct now, so it's going to be strengthen.
Not the meaningful partnerships.
Saying strengthen meaningful?
Yeah.
We can, we can nonsense partnership, like, unmeaningful partnership.
I'm not happy with partnerships, because partnerships are not family.
I think in engagement, it could be partnerships, it could be training with families, I mean, I think it's a broader word.
I don't like partnerships, because they're not all partnerships.
Yeah, not at all.
Okay, you want partnerships.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody just engaged, could be a one-day activity that's happening, but then that's different from someone who has a true partnership.
Yeah, long-term, yeah.
But partnership, my problem with partnership is, I, I think it has a different feel to it than.
Well, maybe we should come back.
I don't like the word partnership, I just scratch it out, because that, I think that's more formal.
Yeah.
This isn't like the, the, the senior lady that lives next door that comes over and gives her time to the school.
That's not a partnership.
So restate.
So, well, this kind of throws another piece in there, because I, I wanted to go back to what Ms. Mark was mentioning in that, and just switching what we were leading with, and placing the family before the community.
Yeah, that's how I.
So strengthen.
Strengthen family and community stakeholder engagement.
I like that, how does everyone feel about that?
I'm going to say strengthen family and community stakeholder engagement.
All right, I.
That's good, good.
I may put expand later, but this is fine. All right, strengthen family and, and community.
Stakeholder.
Stakeholder engagement.
Mm-hmm.
I like engagement stakeholder.
Okay.
All right, anyone not comfortable with that?
And all of these, once we get through the accountability plan, you know, we can just reaffirm and come back to this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, what we're doing today, we're going to bring it back together, oh, I know, we're watching.
Three o'clock.
Okay, well, I know, all right, that took a little bit longer than I thought, but that's fine.
This is good.
Is it just possible that we could get the three that we've just semi-agreed on up somewhere?
I'll write it up there.
So once we go through.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we got our goals, now, what I'd done earlier, uh, earlier, a few months ago, that I shared with the board, was I took the priorities and I aligned them with the goals, so that we saw what went under, and so we were looking at it, and, and I was looking at it through the lens of the, the criteria that the state and the feds are looking at for accreditation and, and their support, and I wanted to, I, this is, I personally wanted to bring those up to the forefront, because, for example, absenteeism is not down as a priority, but it is now very important for, for state accreditation and for the S.S. schools.
But if you will, when you say ensure full accreditation, that would include everything that falls under it.
It does.
Yeah.
It does, but then, so, but, well, everything that I'm on list here does, and most of the things here, because basically everything goes to student achievement and accreditation, but what I did is I went through, so goal one now, which reads improve student academic achievement and outcomes, and so what I did is I looked at the priorities we already had, and we have a lot of really strong priorities in here that are not going to change, so I took number one, which, which falls under goal one, which is ensure full accreditation, and I left that, I, I, but I put a target with it, so mine would say ensure full 100% accreditation of all school, that's redundant, either ensure full accreditation or ensure 100% of schools are accredited, and then I put it on a timeline, a three-year timeline, and, and then I even wrote what we use, and we use the new accreditation scoring system, and, and I have an asterisk by it, because that's required.
Which document are you on?
Oh, it's, I'm sorry, I'm, it's this, I have this, the one you have, and then I'm just looking at the priorities now going under the goals, that we're going to look at this, it was, and the folder I gave you was the very first thing, it had a sheet on top, I said just take that off, and then look at the number one in the corner, so that you all have in front of you, I'm sorry, I thought I, I must have not asked you to do it, that's my, I thought I did, the sheet that I had, so you're always, you're already looking at what we already have, and now we're at the priorities.
Got it.
And we want to align the priorities with the goals.
Okay.
So, you know, so that's, so I'm just going down the priorities, and the first priority is ensure full accreditation, which to me is the top priority, and so it's number one here, I listed it under, under goal one, A, B, C, D thing, I was just doing that, so under goal one, then I, under that put, I took goal two, I mean, priority two, increase academic achievement of all students while closing gaps simultaneously, I split it, now, Tanya's going to speak to that in a minute, too, I split it into one B and one C, increase percent of students meeting, bleh, meeting SOL benchmarks, and then one C, decrease percent of all subgroup achievement gaps to, well, to 5%, I was putting the target, decrease percent of all subgroup achievement gaps, as three, so in other words, this is just, and then I'm going to stop here for a minute, so we can discuss, I took the first two and made them the first three under goal one, no real change to the board, but my big thing is achievement gaps, and now it's so huge, because it's now for accreditation, it's now for the S.S. stuff, that I thought it needed to be pulled out. Now, I think Tanya wants to address that, too, with a different point of view.
I just wanted to, when I was asking, so what you're describing, your version, we don't have that, that's something that's on your paper?
Oh, yeah, should I have copied it?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to follow.
It was like my thoughts, it was my thoughts.
Okay, okay.
I'm just sharing, it's my notes to me for my thoughts, you know, when, when we said review and, and.
I'm sorry.
Bring your stuff in, so I wrote my, my, in fact, in fact, to let you know my progression, my first draft of my notes was three pages long, and then I thought, okay, I'm putting stuff on here that isn't school board level, and so I, this is draft five, it was down to here, now, I made some changes, because we were talking earlier, but this, so this is what, so I wanted to just throw what I had done with the first two, I, I thought they were both important enough, I think the data, even if you didn't have a chance to do a page-by-page reading of this notebook, and I can't imagine why everyone couldn't have done that last night, we've been listening to Karen and her team tell us where we are, we've been listening to the data, so we have a pretty good idea of where our strengths are, and, and our areas for improvement are, and so, that's what I'm doing, so now, I'm, that's why I wanted to stop at that point, so you could now get your point of view in at this point, and we'll just kind of work our way down, hopefully in the next 15 minutes or so, so we could then move to actually looking at the plan, and, and we don't, we're not bringing a completed plan, we're going to look at the completed plan that we already had, our current plan, and then we're going to look at a suggested way to do it that brings it more in line with the new format that the district seems to be using. So stopping there with the one and two that everybody now has, what I did was I kept the first one, and our goal would be 100%, and then I took the second one, and I just split it between overall student achievement, and then focused, and I wanted to make focusing on the gaps its own priority, and that was just my Lauren Campson thing, so at this point, if everyone could kind of jump in where you are with that.
Mm-hmm. So I think you were, so the ensure full accreditation piece, I think I heard Dr. Boone while I was up there writing, I had a similar, I said the same thing, that was my thought, that some of, based on the state's criteria is implied, so when we say full accreditation in our accountability plan, we'll be monitoring those items, so I personally don't feel like we need to explicitly state that here. The achievement gap piece is different, and I agree with Ms. Campson in having a focus there on that. Aside from benchmarks, however, I want to keep the increased academic achievement of all students, because SOLs is, is not what, yeah, we've moved away, we're, we need to think about student achievement beyond SOLs, and we need to make sure that that is how, we reflect that in our priorities and our goals, and through our accountability plan, is that we're looking at other things beyond SOL, so I want, I want to see that captured in our priorities.
So it sounds like you're saying ensure full accreditation, increase academic achievement, rather than having students meeting benchmarks, and.
Right, well, why don't we say exceed?
Meet and exceed, but that's still.
Define benchmarks, which benchmarks?
The SOL benchmarks.
Okay, so I want to go beyond that, I want to, you know, are we talking, we're talking about children having access, you know, also thinking about from an equity standpoint, what are some other academic, we have that currently in our plan, and we're, we're going to go through that, and you'll see that, and hopefully you've already looked through our accountability plan, but we have a variety of other academic indicators that go beyond SOL, so, and we don't want to lose sight of that, and from an equity lens, we want to be sure that we are looking at those by various subgroups, that's why the, of all, you know, academic achievement of all children, because we want to ensure that we are providing, that they're achieving beyond SOLs, hopefully all of, you know, Dr. Boone's whole thing, when she came, you know, we're bringing back teaching and learning, and beyond SOLs, and I want that, I would like for us as a board to maintain that philosophy and reflect that in our priorities and our accountability plans, so that is why I feel strongly about leaving that there.
Okay, anybody else?
When we say ensure full accreditation, I, I, I understand we have our goals, and then the, the goals focus down into the priorities, and priorities, we can say, are these our priorities for, you know, this current, this current school year, based on the assessments that we have before us, and the priorities can, can change as the, as the data is, is reviewed. So my first question is, do we want to leave it as ensure full accreditation, or do we want to specify ensure full state and federal accreditation? Do we want to do that, because a lot of people.
There's technically no federal accreditation, we have to meet federal benchmarks, is what would be the language there.
Okay, so, all right, so that kind of answers that question then, and then, I'd, I'd like to hear everybody else's opinion on the achievement part.
Yeah, I mean, I think in one of our current, prior conversations about the full accreditation, that we, we kind of made this assertion, that if we focused on the state benchmarks on almost every occasion, except maybe for like a one or two different outliers, we would meet the federal, right? It was like, we, we had a discussion around that one, that, so when we talk about full accreditation, you know, everything that we're doing kind of at the state, we kind of meet that one there, I mean, I, I'm not about, I think that we, when we get to the tactics that will come from the administration, is where. that will come from the administration is where the detail comes in. So, um, the priorities are kind of, you know, they're supporting the overall why did we decide to pick these goals? And so that's kind of where I am, not getting too detailed until, and to allow the detail to kind of come into the actual tactics, action items. So I like the ensure full accreditation. I do like the idea that you had, Ms. Campson, about splitting the two. Because I am very focused on closing the achievement gaps. Because that was also another area that I think we identified, that if we were able to close those gaps, that it would almost kind of raise the tide and it automatically.
Tell me again, you said decrease percentage of all subgroup achievement gaps? Is that what you had?
That was just how I worded it, certainly.
I was just trying to write down my notes.
All right, yep, right. It was just a matter, my thought was.
To decrease.
Yep, definitely decrease the gap, because we have gaps, you know, in the twenties for our black, white kids. We have gaps that even reach up into the thirties for our special needs students. My, my thought when I started this was, what are we required to do to demonstrate to ourselves, our children, their parents, everyone, that we are giving a high-quality education to the children? What yardstick are we using? What yard stack, stick, what yardsticks are the state and the feds using to determine that? And to me, those are priorities for us, whatever those, we didn't get to choose the yardsticks, but they're the yardsticks everybody has. And so that's why, if I went down my list, you would see I've listed every one of the yardsticks, which is SOL benchmarks being met, decreasing achievement gaps, increasing the on-time graduation rates. Notice how they're all indicators for, for those. The attendance piece, on-time attendance, which I, and then, which I kind of think belongs in the next goal, but all, all of those. Full accreditation, students, percent of students meeting gaps, I mean, meeting benchmarks, decreasing the gaps, increasing on-time graduation, and, and, and increasing attendance rates. So those are the, those were the, when I look at, when I looked at what was required for the state accreditation and for meeting the federal, as the guidelines, those were the five things that were there. And so to, so I felt that those were a priority. I'm just telling you where I came from. I'm not saying this is what everybody has to do. But that was what was in my mind, at, at, looking at it as a parent or a citizen in the city. This is the yardstick that I'm given, that we, that all of our children are measured by, all the children in the state and all the schools are measured by. So for me, those are priorities, and that's why I have them down. Rodney, I think I saw your hand.
So I don't disagree with you in the last piece, inside of the current accountability plan, those things that you listed are there.
Yes.
And our conversation in, when we were creating it was those state accreditation and other items that you mentioned were the baseline on the floor. So what our conversation has been over the last few years is trying to, one, take forgiven, that yes, we ought to make sure that we are meeting the minimum standard. But the, as the state and the state board was going through their accountability plan, and if you look at their profiles, things that they came up with were actually we had. But I just want to get clear on, on the, when you're talking about the school board priorities, if it currently reads, increase academic achievement of all students while closing gaps simultaneously, what is it about closing gaps that is in the current language that is not reflective of you all's conversation around additional language around gaps? I'm not, I'm not sure I'm following where it currently references closing gaps simultaneously. Are you, other than it sounds like you want the gaps to be more specific at a priority level, it's missing off of there.
Yeah, that's what.
It's missing off of there. The, the goal, the board priority is increase academic achievement of all students while closing gaps simultaneously.
Yeah, and it's, it is there. I'm not disagreeing.
No, no, I was from the time.
I just wanted it to get more priority. To me, it, it, it rises to the level, and that's just my own personal opinion. It always did. It always rose to the high level for me. But now that we really, now that we're looking at the new accreditation criteria and the S's stuff, there's all that emphasis on closing these gaps. And I, I just feel like, as the board, we want to make sure that we are really focusing on what we're required to do to get our kids to the floor and then continue on, because you're going to set targets. Once you get to the floor, then you're going to be looking at moving your schools from accredited, fully accredited, which is the floor, to high-performing, and then on up to top-performing. And, and so that continues to be the goal, because you keep pushing the border, because once we're all, once we're all accredited, and the ones that are already accredited are already on the pathway to move up to high-performing. So it just moves you from one to one. And, and like I said, these, I, this is me going through it and deciding what I wanted, what, what I thought was important. And to me, it's important to have an emphasis on daily attendance, because that's now what's being looked at in, in both the state and S that they're all looking at the same thing. And therefore, I thought it rose, that they should be listed as a priority, so we have our eye on it, and something we can measure.
Okay.
And that's, I think, anything we put on here, we have to be able to measure it, because how do we know that what we're doing is working if we don't have a way to measure it? We can be doing things that look wonderful, and we think we're doing a great job, but if we don't measure them, we don't know. We thought we were doing a great job in the nineties with our schools. I thought the school I was an assistant principal in then was doing a great job. It was fun. We were having a great time. The kids seemed to be learning. Everybody was happy. And we got tested, and we were in, you know, down in the gutter, so.
So then, um, so we have ensure full accreditation. We've broken out priority number two into two segments. I, we need to figure out.
This is a suggestion, right?
So we need to come together and figure out if that's something that we like, that we don't like, that we want to change, and then keep going.
Okay. So.
So can you write, keep saying state again what the suggestion is?
All right, priority, the suggested priority one is ensure full accreditation. Or a hundred percent of the schools are cred, the idea. Number two, or one, not number two goal, but, um, not number two priority, neck, under, under the, number two priority would be increase the percent of students meeting SOL benchmarks, if you want it to be measured, or you can say just academic achievement, otherwise. And then broken out from that one now becomes priority three, decrease the percent of all subgroup achievement gaps to, and I was going for five percent, but we don't have to have that now. We don't have to, that's something we can agree on once we get this stuff done at the next meeting. That's where we are at this point.
Aren't the, but, aren't those two, the last, second two? Am I going in circles with this community? So is it just, that, that's part of ensuring full accreditation?
Right.
So, I don't think they should be listed as priorities unless this is more of a political statement than an actual working statement.
I don't think of it as political. I think of it as a focus.
Then I think that those should go under full, because that's what we have to do to.
So you're saying not even mention them as priorities?
Can we get full accreditation without doing those things?
Without closing achievement gaps?
No.
I mean.
Not, not in new system. In the old system, you could. So these, these statements were very applicable.
That's a good point, yeah, yeah.
To keep our eye on it, you're, this is my priority. It's, these are my priorities to increase student, uh, the number of students passing, the percentage of my students passing, reaching the benchmarks, and to decrease the, the huge gaps that we have in some of our subgroups. Some subgroups, we don't really have a lot of gaps. It's, you know.
But, yeah, but I agree, oh, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I was mentioning over, Ms. Smith, I was looking at what was on our agenda and number two.
That's not correct.
And then, okay, so this is the most accurate one.
This is. I don't know, I don't know why that's.
That's not full. That's abbreviated. Dot, dot, dot. It's abbreviated, yes.
I, I didn't even notice.
What? It leaves off the.
It leaves off the.
While closing gaps simultaneously. And that's, yes. So I'm kind of like, I like.
Ignore that.
The one you have in front of you should have.
Yours does. Yeah, it does. I was just saying, I didn't have it on that one.
Yeah.
Oh, right. I didn't write my own here.
If you were to put on the screen the, the current accountability plan, the cover page.
Because I have that, yeah.
Spells that out.
Well, you have that, by the way, in your package.
Yeah, okay.
You have a copy of the current.
All right. What I'm saying is, is that now when I'm kind of looking at this again and with this discussion, I don't know if I would necessarily change it. I think it covers the broad enough for me. And then I do agree with Ms. Campson in regards to maybe parking lining those, that those are things that we highlight in the action items, that as targets, that we need to, the five percent and so forth.
And when we get to the accountability plan, we're going to see all of that outlined. And so as Rodney said, Mr. Jordan said earlier, that a lot of what the state is now doing, we were, we began, you know, with an equity lens in mind, you know, we began doing some of that work already. So it's captured in our current accountability plan. And if there's anything additional beyond that, we'll talk about that as we revise and update, you know.
So Ms. Camp, she didn't understand where I'm coming from on that particular.
Right, that you want to leave them combined. And that's fine, as long, and we just have two different indicators when we're looking at it. And that's, that's why we're having this discussion. I'm, when I'm sitting down planning it, I was planning what I thought. And, but that's why I obviously didn't, didn't come in and have anything completed. I just, I'm reading what I thought to just, to then start the discussion on it. So it sounds like we're looking more at, I'm, I'm making an arrow here. But that's good, because the truth is, I was concerned that I increased the number of priorities from seven to nine after I said we had too many priorities. So that just, and it was incre, it was because I was, I'm splitting, you'll see, there's another place I suppose.
But I, I also don't want, I, I know that, um, everything that we, that we eventually all agree on as far as the accountability plan is incredibly important, but a priority is a priority. And it rises to the level of heightened focus and maybe heightened attention, whether that's more attention in our agenda planning, more attention with reporting. And so, uh, the way that I'm hearing it from Ms. Campson is that you almost wanted to make it surface, not that we're not saying that it's not incorporated under ensure, ensure full accreditation, but it just gives us that extra priority.
Or eye on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, can I, so that's, that's a good, um, intro to what I'm about to say. So, so, um, you know, the accountability plan, we're going to go through it. You'll see, you know, all the items, and of course, you, you're well aware of everything in it. So, and how that, that is what we're using. That is the tool that we as a board are going to be using to monitor progress, right? And that is also the tool that in agenda planning, you're going to be aligning the topics and reporting out of those items. So though, everything in that accountability plan is our focus. That's our focus. And so that's how we have to look at it as we continue to develop the accountability plan, is everything that we want to be our focus in that plan. And so the achievement gap piece is in there, and the reporting out, that should be aligned with the agenda planning. So, you know, tied into what you're saying.
I say, let's go through the, oh, Ms. Martin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just making sure that we're including all students in what we're doing, so you know what we're doing in the sub, the subcategories as well. Is to, if, if we're going to talk about full accreditation subcategories, then I think we need to have a priority for our high-performing and top-performing schools.
What, say this again.
For our high-performing and top-performing schools. So right now, this is, this is, it looks.
It doesn't, you, in other words, it sounds to me like what you're saying is that we didn't write something that says we want to continue moving our schools from a fully accredited to high-performing.
For those schools to continue improvement.
But we're saying, we have. To see a priority about how we're moving the schools through the different levels of unaccredited or accredited with conditions to accredited, to high-performing, to top-performing, which I've actually been tracking.
Right, because I mean, I think that our standards should be high, and that's one of the things we talked about as a governance team. And so our priorities should reflect our high standards.
So that, all right, so that's, that's a poss, all right, I just, when I'm looking at priorities, I'm looking at what I want to keep my eye on the most, what I want to spend my time discussing. And so to me, I agree with you. I.
We don't want those schools to slip.
Yeah, the move, the move from, from accredited to high-performing to top-performing.
And it puts it out there, because all we talk, all we get at.
Does that, and that's something you can measure.
Right, and this goes back to what we talked about at our last retreat about perception and working on that and making sure that people know that we have top and high, you know, performing schools.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of it.
Yeah. And that it is, it is still a priority that we reach that level.
Yeah, I agree. So that's one we might want to consider. And that would go under here, too.
So on that note, um, so my question is, so we have number two, increase academic achievement of all students, which are described as being beyond SOLs. And so then the next piece of top-performing or high-performing, however, is defining that. So are we talking about, how, how are we going to define that?
Are there actual definitions?
For high-performing and top-performing?
What are those benchmarks?
Not at the state.
Because right now, it's full accreditation is, and full accreditation year after year for a number of years. But still, within those fully accredited schools, that's the floor. And then even at those schools.
Icing on the cake.
And then even at those schools, we have achievement gaps that, you know.
That's what number two was trying to get at.
And that's what number two is trying to get at, right?
Student-driven. The accreditation system is school-driven. And so if we have ensuring full accreditation at the school level, make sure all the schools are accredited. At the individual student learning level, number two, the reason why it says increase academic achievement for all students, you can have perfect scores on SOLs, AP tests and everything. We still are committed to increasing academic achievement of all students while also being cognizant of the fact that we're trying to close all gaps simultaneously. So number two was trying to be that encompassing, aspirational, everybody's pushed ahead item. And number one was just trying to deal with those things that we know that we are mandated to achieve as a school division.
Right. Well, so, and, and to answer your question, typically what you look at is the accredited, once you hit accredited, and then, which is, you make the benchmarks, seventy and seventy-five. And then when you're consistently making above eighty and across the board, consistent year after year, you're really looked at as a high-performing school. And when you're consistently making above ninety percent across the board, you're looked at as one of the top-performing schools. That's, and that's not, and as Dr. Boone said, that's not a state thing, but that's kind of a.
Common practice. Well, we'd have to define, yeah. Dr. Boone, did you want to add?
Well, I was going to say that the, the only other thing I wanted to say is that the state has developed, they had in place, but they now revise their system of acknowledging schools based on, on their progress. Or a school that's been high-performing over time can get, uh, certain recognition. I think they have some governor's awards or whatever else they call them. So there is a recognition program.
That's right.
That, that addresses schools that are high-performing over time.
And I think that's something that the, um, that has always kind of rubbed me wrong, is that, you know, weren't, and maybe this is outdated, but becoming a school, um, a school board of distinction, while your school, you know, you're not, you don't have a priority becoming a school of distinction or whatever, you know, these.
We got, this is what we already discussed.
Winning these awards, this is our.
We've discussed, we've discussed that very thing. That was my exact same point of view, is it seems a little embarrassing to call yourself.
Yeah, why should I be distinguished?
But I don't want us to get.
I want our children to succeed first.
And then it all, yeah. But, and Tony was explaining that, but anyhow, we'll get to that.
We'll get to it. But, but when you look at this, though, say, parents are looking at this, not knowing this, this discussion and this detail, but it, it looks like increased academic achievement for all students, kind of looks like since ensure full accreditation is number one priority, you're doing that to ensure full accreditation. And so it doesn't explicitly say and beyond, and still support high-performing students and everyone else, yeah.
Me didn't exceed is a common term that we've used in the district many times in the past. But on the other hand, I, I kind of like the idea of pulling it out as a priority, but as we know, I'm liking, I just make the main thing the main thing, what I'm going to keep my eye on the most.
I mean, these priorities have been here for five years, so, right? I mean, seven, six years?
I don't think it's been that long.
It was when we, I know you all, you all meeting, the most veteran board members, I think when the strategic plan was.
Yeah, I mean, these are developed, so they need a, a little freshening.
It's, it's time.
The priorities, I mean, we have priorities, but.
Especially with the fact that the whole accreditation system is changing. The, the school improvement is changing, and to that, we, we see both at the state and the federal level, the changes. And that was what I was trying to reflect in, in, in my thinking with this, is that I just wanted to, yeah, because I, real fast, just to tell you what, Russ, I have under this goal, I, I add it in because of the focus on it now, is increase the percent of students meeting on-time graduation, increase daily attendance from whatever to whatever. And, and all of those were because that they're now the things that the state and the feds are really focusing on to recognize what our children are doing. But I like the fact that Adele has brought back to my attention, all of our attention, the fact that we need to even think of beyond, because once we're all accredited, hopefully in three years, then we'll really be focusing on this, because my five-year thought was full accreditation in twenty-two and high-performing, everyone high-performing by twenty-four with other people. Because the thing is, once you get to high-performing and you're working in the eighties, it's interesting how quickly you can slip up to top-performing in the nineties. It, it really, it. It, it really, it, it just kind of picks up, because by then you've figured out what's working for the particular children you have in your school and for the particular skills that your, your staff has. You've figured it out, and it all starts to sync together, and then the movement really starts going.
Yes, go ahead, sorry. No, 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 I want us to, I want us to get a hold of what we want to get out of this part of the discussion and then move on it, yeah.
Right, right, and I think, Ms. Campson, those are great points, but when we get into the accountability plan, we'll see how that lays out, if that's something that we all agree on our de-identified needs as, as you described. So, and I think we can, we'll come back to these priorities, too. Number three, improve climate safety and attendance, we've talked about that as a goal, so I think that's inappropriate. I don't, I don't know if anyone has anything.
And attendance was the one we mentioned about already, because that's now has an eye on it, but you know what, I was.
Keith, that goes back to my point, we had already, already started talking about attendance, it's right there.
We've already got attendance, here it is. I just put attendance off and put it with goal one, so we can leave it in goal two, either way, I think it fits either place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you all consider coming back to the priorities and going through the plan?
I, that's fine with me.
Okay, but well, before we do that, could we real quick look at then the plan format? Because we were going to look at how, because you were going to then write.
Yeah.
Because once we, kind of idea of a format, and just, that, this won't take any time.
Okay.
So that she can look at how she's moving the current plan, if, if indeed we choose to do that.
Yeah.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
And we, that way you give you some time to think a little bit more about the priorities and how we want to do them. Alright, in your folder, you have, in your folder you have some plan, they're really just examples. So, so let's move to the two main ones, look at what is number five and six. Five is, and I'm sorry, it's written all over, that was the copy I had, and I write all over everything, so just ignore anything I wrote. Not much, it was just me looking for it. I wanted to do the O-nine one, where is that? You should have.
O-nine is number two?
Alright, yeah, number two, what I, alright, so if you look, we're going to, real fast on this. Number two, number five, and number six. Alright, I wanted you to just see number two, to see how the format, this is the Doug Reeves format that our current plan is also done in. And I just wanted you to see how it's, the little bit of difference where it actually had the accountability, it had the data included. Notice column one, identified need, there was the data, that's what I kept saying, I'd like the data there. Then it had, if you look all the way over, the benchmarks or standards, and it just said, and you can see they, where the blanks are, the accountability piece was in that one. So then we went, we have the new, the, the current one, which is the one here, and that's the one that Tanya is going to take you into detail, so I will do a lot with that.
Is that five, is that what you're saying five is?
Five, sorry.
Is that currently adopted?
This is the current plan that you have. And then what I wanted you to then look at is, when you were, when Dr. Bailey was showing us one of the charts, where the way she had the information, and then she had the data, that, and that, that format, alright, that's the format they seem to be moving toward. Where's Dr. Bailey?
She had to step out a minute, she'll be back.
Oh, okay, well, Dennis is here, that was, seems to be, it was a format, Dennis, Dr. Bailey, is there a difference?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
I expected that from, Dr. Boone, but not from you, Lauren.
Okay.
Alright, so Dennis was listening to our, has been listening to all of our discussions, and, and especially my continual thing about whining about, I don't have, I need that, I need that, I need that.
Okay.
So what he did is.
Can I ask a clarifying question, though? Because this is something that, when I, whenever I hear, are we using the most updated plan, are we using the most updated plan to reference? Is this accurate on, on plan number five, when it goes to the bottom where it says, the bottom, it says updated April fifth, twenty-seventeen? Is that true?
This is our currently adopted plan.
It's true per the document that you have in your hands, there's work that has been done that has yet to come back to the board for update.
There has, right, there has, right, yeah. But as we go through it, there, yes, some of, a lot of, there is, there are things in here that have been accomplished.
Yes.
And based on the data that you've been provided in the binder, also, we're going to talk about, as I think Ms. Campson was about to describe, that based on our, this board's previous conversations around the accountability plan, the board's request to have the data in the same place as, as our identified needs in the accountability plan, so we're not looking at a scorecard and, you know, at different places. So Dr. Bailey and Mr. Fuddy, they've worked to take those comments without changing the content of the plan, and to incorporate that into what you then have is labeled as twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen accountability plan. And it's dated to the left.
That's number six.
Yeah, that's number six.
Okay.
And it has a date of twelve eighteen, two thousand eighteen on it, so I think that's where you were going.
Right, that's where I was. Right, because I kept saying, I, what's, I need a current plan, I need a current plan. So what, what, what Mr. Fuddy, Mr. Fuddy and Dr. Bailey did is they took the content of the current plan, correct me if I'm wrong, and they transferred it to a new format, that is the format that you're starting to use. Again, it was a format, Dr. Bailey, why don't you real quick, just tell what you said to me about it being used before and then.
Right, yes, we had a, a format, the title of the plan was called achievable results. And then the administrations prior to Dr. Boone decided that they didn't want to follow that direction. And so however, we thought it was a good direction, and so we collapsed. We heard you at the, one of the board meetings, you wanted us to take the dashboard data and the plan and collapse it together. And so that's what we have done as a recommendation for today.
And, and so based on their recommendation, both Tanya and I have spent a lot of time doing close reads of this and finding that it, it does give what members of the board seem to be asking for, and bring it all together in one place without changing the content. It's basically a format change, and so what we were doing is we're bringing it to the board now to see if the board is comfortable with the new format. And then Tanya will then show you how that matches in, and then, and then, and as I said, we're just counting, this is, this, the years, you can see it was done back, just done last month. But it's, but it includes.
Yeah, so this is just a new format, we're going to.
It's a new format, we're going to look at and see if it gives us everything at once, because we know all the data's there, it's just, we don't want to go hunting for it. And we've got our data notebook that has detail, but this pulls that, and this also shows how the targets are set. So when do we want to be fully accredited, when do we want to have our schools be high perform, whatever, whatever, when do we want to get our attendance all up to ninety-five percent? Whatever, the targets are here with the increments, and this is something that I think the leaders, the superintendent and her senior staff and leadership team are working on all of these things. So, so the numbers in here would reflect the targets that they're adding are the targets that the superintendent and her team have put in, not, you know, and we'll be looking at that when we get into a deeper thing with this, if we decide to go this way. So, so just, I'm going to just show you what it looks like briefly, and then Tanya's going to move over and start showing you the, the. So, so if you move on into it, page, page five. Alright, so at the top, it's going to have the goal, we may change a little bit, so the goal's written, and at the goal one, improve student achievement and outcomes. And then under that, there'll be the, that's why you heard me going A, B, C, because I was already thinking in, in line with this. And, and we'll be, you know, those might, those will be changing to a certain extent, that's why I had suggested we do the priorities. Tanya actually thought we should have done this part first, so maybe now it looks like the board's thinking the same thing. So, but anyhow, we would fill it in with what we decide are the priorities, and then the indicators we want. And the indicators would then be aligned with what's in our data notebook, which is already set up by goals. Then it would be, the priorities would then go in, and it would tell you exactly what the detailed data is. But here you have these, this is what I like, here it is, the data piece at the bottom that goes with what's up here, and the targets that brings it all the way to where you want to go. And this, as I said, these targets and everything are something that Dr. Boone and her team has put in, and we did not have it in ours. But this is the accountability piece that I was looking for, because we're putting it in our plan as the board, so now this is what the board's accountable for. So, so you can kind of glance at it and see, and that's why we got it on board docs, I'm sorry we didn't get it on until yesterday. But we would like you to kind of look at and see if you're comfortable with moving to this format. And I have to tell you, this was a big transition for me, because I've been using that Doug Reeves format for two decades, and I love it. But when I looked at this, I thought this was better than mine.
This is the, this is the migration that had begun to occur with the work that the district back then was doing with the Panasonic Foundation. And as we continue to grow and we develop the achievable results and, and all of that work, we just, you know, no accountability system stays the same. The practices, the principles, the data continue to emerge, and as a district grows and changes, state and federal accountability system changes, the district's project, progress changes, and our focus begins to be refined, then we can't stay with the exact same document to always get us there.
Can I make two, two points? This format allows for, you'll see up here in the goal, a lot of text and explanations. So if there are notes or information that would be helpful to explain the following charts, that can easily be added and incorporated into the document. The other thing is, we're going back to, as Dr. Boone mentioned, the AR, we had graphs, so the graphs can be included in here from the charts, which was again. The other third thing is, at the very back of the document, is part of the, what we have in the dashboard, which is a cross-reference of the various documents and reports that the school board had, has in the current plan. And the, as Lauren commented, maybe, I'm sorry, Tanya, if I'm jumping ahead. The apartment in an estimated timeframe of when that data would be available. So that then provides an additional insight into data that's beyond what's actually documented as part of the actual document itself. So all of the information that was in the Excel spreadsheet, which had data and information, is now in this, incorporated in this document as a Word document.
And page seventeen and eighteen then reflects what was carried over from the accountability template that we were currently using, we're currently using. Again, with this idea, based on when we know data released by the state. If you look in the, the, the original one, the one, data seventeen that you were mentioning a minute ago, it, it talked about, these months are exactly the same that were there, based on when we know the state releases certain data. And then other data that were internally controlled data, then we put in a date of when we would expect it to be started.
I really like this instrument, I mean, it really gives us everything we were asking for.
And I'm just going to echo that, because I know I was one of the main individuals in that meeting that was talking about that. I really appreciate the administration going back and coming back with this, and really listening to what we were seeing in that meeting. I think this really captures that, and this is a good direction.
Yeah, when I saw this, I was like, and, and Dennis said, you got everything you wanted, because I'm like, I don't know about this format. The person who's saying, get out of the status quo is going, I like what I'm already doing. So it was a good, you know, little self-reflection to me to look in the mirror and realize that I need, so that's why we, both of us, I mean, she's got more written stuff on hers than I do, and we've been really doing a close thing, and I, I, you know, I mean, there'll be some adjustments we make, but it's.
Just something really small, and as a newer board member, whenever I'd hear dates, and it was the closed date, the public date, the release date, la, 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 like. So, so when it just says date there, it's not specific, so if you can specify date released or to the public, or.
What type of date is it?
Yeah, what does that mean?
Well, we're going to work on it, and it needs some revisions and stuff. But we wanted to make sure that everyone on the board was comfortable with it before we start, yeah, that's me. The minute they said data, they wouldn't be, alright, how are you with?
I'm in queue.
Well, I'm just going to make a comment, so as you look at it, too, I want you to think about this, because as I was, so this is our school board accountability plan. And so there's a part of me, you know, I think I went a little bit in the other direction from Ms. Campson, but because I'm from a school board lens, so it is, what do we, what is, how are we going to hold ourselves accountable? So while this is great, everything is in one place, this, the version that Dr. Bailey and Mr. Fuddy provided, it's great. It's responsive to what other board members wanted in terms of having the data in the same place. However, you know, just as a thought, you know, and I'm thinking this through, too. It is, what are we as a board going to do? These are the identified needs, and the identified needs currently in this draft is the same as what was in our adopted accountability plan. However, it includes what is, it's in here, it's toward the back, but what we as a board are going to do to ensure that we are working to make sure that we are monitoring those needs, right?
Other board actions.
Yeah, so like board level indicator, the strategies, the PD, the implementation monitoring, all of that is right now, it's included, but it's included on four, let me see, thirteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen, okay? So the setup, you know, just, just keep in mind, we're going to, I think the content is the most important thing that we need to get through. But just, the question I want you to think about is, is it diluting the board's attention away from what it is we need to be doing versus a, what, what I felt was more of a reporting, was a report. So this is a report of what we want, and I like this as a report. But as our accountability plan that we are then going to use to direct the administration to align, as you've said often, to align their district accountability, school level accountability, these are the expectations that we're setting. This is how agenda planning will be then aligned, so that we get the data we want, so that every, every meeting, you know, we're touching on one or two items that are in the accountability plan, we're accountability plan focused, so that we are able to meet the goals that we are, we discussed earlier, and maybe, you know, come back and visit. But do you, does that make sense, am I?
No, and I'm, I'm totally with you in understanding that this is kind of sitting on its own island. However, I'm, my mind is kind of thinking when I look at, look at the plan and look at the format that we have here, our ultimate goal in any of the things that we're doing in those board actions is to support the superintendent and the administration in completing these items, from a policy perspective and from board.
Right.
So my thing is, is that is there the simple kind of actions, date responsibility, reporting back, additional format that's kind of added to this overall plan? Because at the end of the day, this is what we need to be focusing on, but we also need to make sure that we're doing these actions. And I think that if we don't keep them together in some format and looking at them, then we can start losing. So my thing is, is that maybe we come back and we find a way that very simple action item, you know, responsible type of thing, deadline, any notes, status of where we are, and that becomes an additional from the board. These items are going to support everything that's here, and making sure that that's constantly a focus that we're looking at as a board member.
And that implementation monitoring column, you know, that we have here, could be a place where we do, you know, right now, what we currently had in there. And Mr. Jordan can expand on what I, whatever, what I'm saying, because from our previous work on this. But that was to be, then what was used to guide agenda planning. So then the reporting out would be.
Yeah, they would all be tied together.
Right, all tied together, but then included here, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was interrupting, yeah, I'm sorry. So what I, what, as I was listening to you, first of all, I agree with you, because we, but it could be as we start, as we work with this, because remember, this is something that this, these people put together so fast for us, so appreciated. But that doesn't mean that it, it has to be exact, we could add a little, you know, under each part, we could add a line that has.
That's board.
That has those things in it, so that we bring it, rather than just putting it at the end, we could actually put it under, at the end of each goal. And we could then have the piece for, because basically, that's what we're doing. We're saying to this, I think, my interpretation of what we're doing is, we're saying, these are our goals and, and our priorities, we're handing to the superintendent, and we want them, you know, we want.
We're developing with the superintendent.
Thank you.
As a governance team.
Here we are, as the governance team, the board and the superintendent are developing these goals and priorities and timelines, and then we're handing them, or she's taking them as she leaves the meeting.
She's implementing.
And then she's deciding what is the plan, like the strat, all the way down to the.
Just like the example of what we did right at the end of the attendance, we gave you a draft page. That's how it, the accountability plan looks in terms of administrative implementation.
And keep in mind too, that there is, the goal is, sorry, to be an electronic dashboard. So that's what we're trying to shoot for, right? Is that not only can this board access, not only can this board access it, but we want it so that the community.
Oh, absolutely.
Anyone can access it, and that is what we're trying to achieve. And I know, he's been waiting.
Can we do Karen and then Mr. Jordan?
He has my sheer patience. That's why I have a little of it, because Rodney has it all.
Okay, all right, Karen and Dr. Rodney.
I just wanted to add that, you know, we can add to the plan that you're looking at the action steps that you saw in the example today. And that would just be catered to the board, the board's action steps. And we can put those headers in similar, and we can decide then what actions, dates, this and the other, to put underneath each one, similar to the old plan.
All right, so I love the report. I think we, I've seen iterations of this before, but kind of piggybacking on what Ms. Bassin and Ms. Camps were just talking about. If you look at the oh nine, ten version, number two. So in red, there's a first statement that's underlined, and it says, remember, this is a board's accountability plan, a guide to focus your actions this year. So when we worked on the existing school board accountability plan, what our intent was, was to focus the board's actions for the year as it aligned with the strategic plan and the longer range goals. If you then look further under red, it says, the strategies listed are what the board will do to improve the identified need. The professional development listed is what the board needs to improve their capacity to address the identified needs. The monitoring column is how the board will monitor the degree of the board's progress in implementation of identified strategies. So as, in working with Dr. Bailey and Mr. Foody over the years and many iterations of this, in my view, when we've had conversations in the past, coming from the administration side, I think the tendency from the administration side is to focus on these things, okay? These items, the measures, the indicators, the things that we were putting in the dashboard, that like in the old accountability system would be an annual report to the community, and it would show all the tier one, tier two, tier three, and all these outcomes as we have here. When we started down this path, we had, we had gone through multiple superintendents. We had gone through multiple school board members. We had reports from Council of Great City School and others that said, we had all these initiatives, and they were all over the place. And so we put together the school board accountability plan in the middle of a superintendent search, just trying to focus the board's actions and the board's role in improving student achievement, culture, climate, and so forth. So I still kind of see that the two somehow need to go together. But in my mind, if it's the board's accountability plan, then what has been relegated to the back that we were just talking about, needs to be front and center.
Right.
And how, and how it.
I think we're all saying the same thing.
Right, but and how. Because I think it exists now, but and how it impacts each area. Because being someone who's obsessed by the data, I know how easy it is to then look at the performance data and immediately go below the line and start talking about implementation strategies at the administration level versus what we're doing as a board. So when we, if you look at, if you were to pull out the old calendar and we started talking about, you know, we would do board priorities in a certain point in the year. We would get academic data at a certain point. We would review policies along the way. Those were the things that we were pulling from. And I would just hope that we don't end up losing sight again on our role and our responsibility as a board and as a governance team for the school board accountability plan. As Dr. Boone was coming in, she had worked in her previous district with Tim Quinn, who had in his book the whole comprehensive accountability system stuff also. And when we discussed it as a board, we agreed that with so much stuff going on, we would continue to focus on the school board accountability plan piece. And when the board was ready to talk about a more comprehensive system, we could figure out, how do you implement that? Because it takes time and resources and a whole lot of things. So I'm comfortable with the two. I don't think it's an either or, as I look at it. But I do think what, what I like about this approach, just in terms of the format, it continues to put the focus on the work of the board. And I think even as a newer, newer, newer board, that it's important that we give that utmost priority attention. So other than that, I like the report, but I think the board's work is important.
I agree that we want, that's why our point was to marry the two. That's what Tanya will be doing, is how to make sure that what we have in here is, moves over here. Was the point was, that I agree, that we do need to keep our eye on, you know, I'm really working on keeping my eye on the part, and the superintendent develops the how to, how to. And that's what she's responsible for. But the idea was, and Tanya's, after Adele, let Tanya start showing you that, how, how the movement to make sure that what's in here is not lost. And that's why I think I was thinking that we would add something underneath each goal that would capture the piece that Rodney just talked about here. And that way, we'd also bring, and we would also bring ourselves in alignment with the new way that central office and the superintendent and her staff are starting to report out stuff. I like to have the data. I know it's, I know it's somewhere, but I don't want to have to keep going and looking for it every time I need something. I really like having this here, and then I love the fact that I can go to the back and, or on here and look at a tab, and I can get some really detailed stuff, including some of my own calculations. So let's see what Adele has to say, and then if it's okay with everyone, let's listen to what Tanya is gonna tell us about how to marry the two. Still have the format, because as Mr. Jordan and I were talking about last week, some emailing back and forth, the format isn't the most important thing here. It's the content and what we're doing with it. But this brings us in alignment, and it gives those of us that like to have the data right in front of them to see if we're moving in the right direction. So Ms. Martin.
It was just the same, that I think having, breaking it up, instead of having the board actions in the back, but breaking it up over the different topics, it brings it into alignment. I mean, that's really, I want to, that's what I'm gonna say. And I'll make sure that there aren't any kind of action items under the board's list that don't actually align with certain things.
Right, yeah, that's right. And that's what our review is part of.
And then, and then we'll get back to the priorities real quick, so that we're then able to start putting something together for you to see next time, so, Tanya.
Yes, and so, anyone else have anything before we move on?
You know what, go ahead.
Go.
Go ahead, yes.
Okay, so what I want you to, I want you, the most recently adopted, which is the Doug Reeves model, which does not have the data tables in it, but I want you to simultaneously put them in front of you.
And they'll be up here too.
Have number five and number six.
Have number five and number six.
Okay.
Okay, and so I'm gonna walk through the identified needs. You know, you'll see the board level indicator, strategies, P D, implementation monitoring. We're gonna look at what we currently have. And then I think at the same time, in the interest, we could talk about, what should we pick up, new items to add?
I think we're gonna have to do that. Let's, if we get this part. I think we have enough time, let's go through it, because we really, we need to get the priorities kind of set so we can get some work done in between before the next meeting.
All right, so if you look through there, so the first board priority, or the goal is improve student achievement and outcomes. And we have identified needs listed here, and I don't think I need to read through each one. I can, if that's what everyone wants to do. But are we, first of all, in agreement with the identified needs that are listed? So that's the first column.
We'll say these tied to the discussion we were having earlier about the goals and priorities.
So these are examples of what is required by the state to reach full accreditation.
Have to take history out, right?
Well, we don't have S O Ls, but we still have to report history scores.
Still something you have to do, isn't it, isn't it a project thing or something?
It's a performance-based assessment. We still have reporting requirements now, unfunded mandate.
It'll be different.
And then right now, we have, you know, the reporting out of this in October, September, October, to increase the number of board reports and progress of school based on S O L performance ratings. And as you'll see, this is an example where, like that, you can't see on this first page. That's not listed here. But that's something that we can move toward, including those board level indicators. What are we gonna do to make sure that we're monitoring that information?
In other words, we have the word monitor, so we can.
Right, but it just says what we're gonna monitor, but not how.
And not how frequently.
And how frequently, right.
Like I said, but I think the idea of using a space there.
Yes, exactly.
A box, a special box.
Yep, I agree.
And also.
Are y'all taking notes?
When we, when we wrote this in, when we wrote this in 2015, the goal was to increase. Today, it may be to maintain. I don't know if we, we would have to talk about whether or not we need to increase the number of board reports. So we would have to make a determination whether or not the board reports that we're currently receiving, whether or not that is a sufficient level, or we knew more, or we need less. But when we started this, it said increase, because the board and the superintendent time felt that we could do a better job in terms of the frequency with which we were looking at the data.
Right, and then if you look down, not only increase, but what do we want in those board reports? Like if you go down to monitor progress, we have, you know, monitoring the non-accredited schools, looking at cohort progress, which I think is extremely important, because that's, you know, just looking at a snapshot in time is one thing, but really monitoring cohorts over time is important. Also, student pass, passive, pass advanced rates. Those are also other items that we said we're gonna look at, growth summary reports. And at the time, this is before the state adopted the growth piece. And so that was one of the things that the previous board had wanted to work toward, is how can we look at growth so that we can tell of the story? Because we know that there's growth happening. But just to tell you, my view about that is not just to look at those kids who were failing and now are passing the S O L, but we also want to know, or the kids that are basic, you know, meaning are proficient, are they moving into pass advanced? And then really having a good understanding of that. Because if you look at the pass advanced data, you know, they're largely, you know, less than, I think, forty percent. Most of them are around fifteen to twenty. So there, we, I think that should be a goal, is to move.
So is the purpose of what we're gonna do, what we're doing right now, is you're showing us how we have the one plan and then the version that they've been working on. And then at some point, are we gonna give the feedback on how this board comes together of how we like the indicators and the strategies?
Right, or are these the right, is this the, are these the strategies and indicators that this board, at this point in time with the data that we have in front of us, are these the right ones? So right now, we know we have to, we are mandated to monitor these things. So we really, we don't have a choice in the matter. Of course, one thing that we are, we're committed to doing is looking at achievement gaps. And the board in this current plan, so that we're gonna look at, for instance, students with disabilities, and look more closely at that subgroup, and look at further subgroups. And you'll see the notation at the bottom to take those larger subgroups where we have, you know, more kids in those disability categories, to see what's going on there. And that is a tab in your, in your binder, it's under tab three. So you can look at that information, and we want to see if, does that tell us another story about areas or gaps that we might want to resource, or look to the administration for advice on how to.
So as we, we just talked about the feeder patterns, as we were having the discussion about absenteeism. So would this be an appropriate time to say, board level indicator under the monitor progress, cohort progress, could we put a slash feeder patterns? Because we've kind of talked about how that is playing into how we look at the data and how we follow students from elementary to middle to high school. So is that something that we would want to put down as a, as a board level indicator? Something that we would want to monitor, something that we just assume is already gonna be a given?
I think you're talking about like the feeder pattern report that we've said where they started and then how their, whether they continue to be in non-accredited. Like how they, so that could be a type of report.
Just kind of a chart.
Yeah.
That we could include, so that anytime you wanted to refer to it, you could just go back, and that could be something that you could have. And probably appropriate place for that, it might even be here, but maybe.
I think it's a type of report.
The one thing, if I can, is caution us against building it so much that we can't provide the information, and or administration is spending one hundred percent of its time providing these reports. We've got to make sure that it happens in a more authentic and natural progression. There, we can monitor any and everything we talk about, so what you're saying there. But what I would, like you say, looking at kids, how are kids' progress going? What do we know about the schools? When we look at the schools, then note to ourselves, administrations, make sure we talk about cohorts of kids as part of that. If you go back to what we shared, I think in August, we show a quasi-cohort, you know, because they are not pure, kids in and out of the school, but what it looked like from grade level to grade level. I just caution us, we're not making it voluminous. And let me use the example of the lesson plan. You recall when I arrived, the state had said to the district, we, there's an issue with lesson planning. When they had observed classrooms in our challenged schools, they did not see strong evidence of quality lesson planning that led to quality lesson implementation. And so what I learned when I got here is the district's response was to make it bigger. And so it had all of these pages and all these things to do. We had to come back and focus that. So just remind, accountability plan is that framework, that roadmap to success. It does not reflect each and everything that will be happening in the district as reported and indicated in that. But yes, those inform our conversations, inform our reporting, but not everything gets listed. So just wanted that caution for us.
Yeah, so like I was saying, some of these things can be a report that happens at a time when we feel we need it. So now flip to page five on the Doug Reeves model, number five. So you'll see on-time graduation, other academic indicators on that page. That's under goal one B on the page with the, with the data, it's page seven. And you'll see that it includes graduation, it includes information about district benchmark assessment, which is one of the things that you were, I believe, getting at, Ms. Campson, earlier in the discussion around the priorities.
Please sit down, where are you now?
I'm on page five, right there.
Page five of that one, page seven of the.
The seven of.
Achievable results one.
Yeah.
Page seven of that, the new version.
Yes.
Page five.
Version two, page seven.
That's why I don't do paper.
Yes. Okay, so again, all the board level, I think we'll work to put the board level pieces in here. I think that's consistent, I'm gonna say it, so that we can focus on, on the actual data piece of it.
Yes. Oh, I was just, when you finish that point, I'd like to say something.
No, we didn't, okay. So are there, are there things that the board feels we need to remove? I personally do not see anything to remove, other than to add monitoring the dropout rate under on-time graduation.
What's that now? 'Cause I'm so on.
It's either on page five or page seven. So, if you look at graduation, are those the identified needs at, at the board level that we want to, to monitor?
With a cross-reference to attendance, which is under student academic achievement, because one of the things that prevents some high school students from graduating on time is failure of class due to attendance, even though they were successful on the assignments they, they made. So, just that, that cross-reference to attendance as part of graduation, too.
Tell me the question again that you're asking us to consider under the graduation.
So, are the percentage of dropouts, the dropout rate?
So, under Goal 1B, improved student achievement outcomes, you want to add, under graduation, monitor the dropout rate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's a suggestion.
Suggestion, yes.
Makes sense, that's the right.
Does it make, yeah, okay. And I know we, we actually have been provided that information at times when we're reviewing this, so. But I think to have it here just ensures that we keep our eye on it.
So, all the ones before it said increase, 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 and this one says monitor drop, do we wanna say decrease?
Decrease, yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
Because as, as I look through the strategies, I see that there are some strategies that are pretty common to each of the.
Yes.
The sections, and so maybe we could pull those together, like the aligning of the agenda and the, the calendar, those things that are repetitious, and pull those out, and they'll be at the beginning, because those will be ongoing strategies that are applicable to.
Well, we're, now, monitoring and strategies are two different things, 'cause the strategies are gonna emerge. This is reporting, so I'm not seeing strategies, I'm seeing.
She's, she's talking about.
I was talking about this.
Oh, on the other sheet, okay, yeah, this. Working from two documents, never mind.
The current plan.
Just cancel it.
I was just saying, rather than, than just keeping them each one, if they're ones that are common, for all of them.
And I think that's why.
He already did it, okay. Never mind.
Yeah.
It's already here, oh, there it is.
Let me, well, we did it inten, I'm sorry. Well, I was gonna say, we, we repeated it intentionally for a couple reasons. One, to reinforce the importance of it, and number two, because when you have something on paper, people pull it apart, and then you end up with this, no, I'm just saying, you end up with these different things. So, part of the effort around the focus of what the board was doing, you know, we acknowledged that we repeated several things, but it was trying to, with the intent of reinforcing it. It gets rolled up, I don't really care, but, but I think we should keep that strategies column, because other strategies may emerge that tie to, for example, in this one, that's dealing with on-time graduation rate and other academic indicators, that may be different, so.
So, if we transition to.
Which is?
The new format.
So.
See, the new.
I'm sorry, I was trying to clarify with Rodney.
And I have something, Doug, too, 'cause Rodney said it, that I was in my, that I was thinking about the on-time graduation rate. And it's, it's the on-time graduation rate, but I was also looking at the overage for grade.
Yep.
And that was one that I didn't see anywhere in here, because that, at an.
And we really used to address that a lot.
Because if we didn't get to that earlier, then that kinda.
Yeah.
Would affect everything else.
Absolutely, and I, I agree with you, that's one of the ones that I was gonna suggest to add.
Yeah. It's in that version we hadn't brought forward yet.
What's that?
It was in the version we hadn't brought forward yet.
It was in the version.
That's what I was gonna ask, down that other end.
What version?
Which version you got, Rodney? Under development.
Over here. Yeah, well, we, we had talked about it, I think, three months ago, to, that was one of the, that was one of the pieces that we had, did agree on. Is there?
But it makes, I mean, does everyone understand how that?
Yeah.
It kinda fits with that.
Yeah, it does, because. Yeah, so I had decrease overage for grade by X, you know, X percent, but just to make sure that we're putting folks' attention on that.
Is that under the 1B1 graduation?
It hasn't been added yet, 'cause we wanna go through this.
But is that, but I'm just, I'm just making some notes, so, would that be under improved student achievement outcomes? 'Cause I'm just writing notes on the side.
That, that will be under other academic indicators.
Got it.
'Cause it's a, not just gra, at the senior level, but it's at the middle of school.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Starts early and.
It starts early, right.
Continues, which ultimately impacts graduation.
Right, okay, right. So, nice segue, so now we're under other academic indicators. Are there other academic indicators that you see, that, that you feel that we should add? Are there academic indicators that you think we should remove or look at differently?
Looking on the new version?
You can look on the new version, yeah.
Is this the same thing just moved over?
It's the same thing, it's just, yeah.
Got it.
Right, almost, yeah. So, on page eight.
Of the.
Of the new version.
Handled it.
Yeah, of the key digit, yeah. Well, almost, yes. It's still, yeah, so if you also look at the old version, please, just 'cause it's, it's got more detail there. So, if you look at this one.
Which page?
Yes, so it'll be page five on this version.
Sure makes life hard to switch back and forth.
Yeah.
You're doing a good job, thank you.
Yes.
So, if, I have some thoughts for consideration on this. So, if you go down to the third to the last bullet, we have a vague statement, or vague identified need, increase the percent of students scoring at or above state average. I believe we were referencing the SAT, PSAT, ACT, so I would like that to read SAT, PSAT act scores to meet or exceed state averages.
Okay, so hold on, increase the percentage of students scoring at or above state average for the PSAT?
Right, on the SAT, PSAT, and ACT.
Do we, do we report PSAT state averages, or do they just start with eight, start with SAT? So, PSAT.
That's on, that's actually documented on page eight, it says.
Of the new.
Average. It's reported by graduates.
Right, well, that's, yeah, 'cause that's, that was, we, we asked for that information, so you have that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's like, I feel like we knew what it meant, but it's not written here, what it was supposed to be. And then, the other, other pieces are increase, oh, this was. I'm gonna come back to on-time graduation, but the other pieces, increase the percentage of students promoted to the next grade level who meet or exceed district-level benchmarks. And right now, what we have in there is, let me see where the promotion piece is, just that, that students will be promoted to the next level, but we, we're not saying where we want them to be. And I know we've had some discussion in our meetings around the data, like what are our promotion policies and, and things, and I know there's some discussion going on in the, in the administration around that, but I think our goal should be, how, are we moving, promoting kids who are meeting and exceeding?
Yeah.
So, to be, to be more specific on that, and Dr. Boone.
Are we talking about SOAs when you say meeting and exceeding? Or are we talking about, what are we talking about?
District-level benchmarks, so SOAs.
Um, is it still on page five?
This is still on page five. No.
Under other academic indicators.
Are you looking at the board accountability plan?
I'm looking at the board accountability plan.
So.
Not a barrier test, SOAs.
Thinking that if they were.
Only if it's verified.
Getting promoted.
Right, only the verified.
The area that we were just adding, the, the overage for grade, wouldn't that kinda cover that? Because, I mean, it's, and it changed some of it, but I mean, I mean, that's, my next question was, was it deeper in regards to our policy or something, or promotion, or?
It's, to me, it's deeper than and beyond overage for grade. I mean, and it also touches on, and Dr. Boone, and I'd like to hear your input on that, which is why, it was just a suggestion, a thought, that we're promoting kids who are going beyond the, the floor. So, we're increasing, and that ties into our priority of increasing academic achievement for all students. So, I was kinda thinking with that in mind.
Are you thinking about retaining the ones that aren't meeting the benchmark?
I'm not thinking about retaining anybody.
I'm trying to figure if it's an actual benchmark or kind of a theory, I mean, or kind of a, we want them to do well, but I'm just trying to figure out how we kinda measure that, or are we already addressing it as something else?
I'm not following the connection to the promotion.
Yeah.
'Cause we have right now, increase or maintain grade-level promotion.
Yes.
I think we mean the percent of students who are meeting promotion standards. Okay, so I wasn't sure which one you were talking about.
Don't go backwards. I'm saying, we're saying, don't go backwards. It says.
Yeah.
But you are adding other pieces tied to promotion, and I'm not following.
Those that go beyond.
That meet or exceed, do we wanna qualify that even further?
So, so there, there are two different, there are two different things.
I mean, that's just me.
There's one set of promotion standards.
I'm asking the question.
Right, right, no, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm seeing there's two different things. There's one set of promotion standards, so what are the number of credits, the number, the classes you pay, the grade, minimum grade point average that gets you promoted. The going above and beyond applies to SOL assessments, and we certainly have some students, we, in the last couple of years, we've had a few students that have graduated high school in three years, because they've accelerated the number of classes that they've taken and been successful.
Yeah.
But the going above and beyond would apply to advanced, pass advanced or something like that on SOLs, but the graduation requirements is just simply, the graduation, I mean, the promotion requirement, uh, simply those promotion standards.
Okay, so we'll keep that.
Take, taking past a minimal number of courses. I mean, in, in time, we'll, we'll need to go back and revisit that.
Okay.
As we think about the profile of Virginia graduate, and when they start making the shifts as it relates to classes for which there's an associated SOL test, but the student no longer has to take the SOL test, because they've already passed in that content area. So, that may be something that would be in one of those natural times we would come back and look at.
Okay.
At that piece.
Okay, so, thank you for that, that was just a question I had, and then. And for discussion, I just had, increase the percentage of students who are reading on grade level. And I know at one point we had that in here, but I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
I think it's consistent with our literacy plan, the whole idea that we're increasing literacy, then that links back to some of our overage for grade students.
Yes.
Our students' ability to graduate on time. I think it's an appropriate indicator, and again, that's why we spent the better part of eighteen months developing that literacy model, so that we could see the needle begin to move on that.
Okay.
Could we think about this, 'cause I'm looking at the clock, and we have limited time.
Just go through what?
Well, what I, well, we need to go through it all, but I don't think we're gonna have time to get through that whole thing today. So, could we, at this point, this is just a suggestion, could we make a, see if we can come to consensus about whether we want to transition to the, the new one that the district's using, the new format, and then could we go back and use what time we have left to revisit our priorities? And if, if we could do that, then perhaps we could get the beginning of the transition done, so we could come back with the board and, and be looking at it in this format, making sure we have this as we go through, and that would give everyone a little more time to review the data, to see what they feel about this, so we could, because we need to have the goals and the priorities, the tentative goals and priorities, 'cause they might change as we start working more, but we need to get those and, and get this, get us back on that, because if we start discussing every one of these items, we may be here very, very late, and maybe now, but everyone sees what we're looking at, they'll have time to do some more review before our next meeting on this, just not to have everyone feel about it.
No, 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 we're not gonna stay late.
Oh, yeah, that is. So.
Yeah, because there's some, yeah, this is five o'clock, they're getting ready for the hearing.
In the essence of, of time, and I hear what Ms. Campson's saying, and I was, one of the recommendations of Ms. Vissine and Ms. Campson, since there's such good synergy going and moving this here, if you all would potentially be welcoming to take this back, to mesh the two together, to continue this process of what you were giving to us here, and make recommendations to the rest of the board, and that we come back, and that we could potentially finish the remainder of the conversation on the priorities, so we at least can leave with that, if we have enough time on it, but if you all could finish on.
Whatever we decide on the priorities today is, is a tentative decision, that we'll, what, what, it's kinda decided, we'll kinda work it out, that's something else we could do, so we can get a more solid, 'cause I really want this to be something that we're all, all on board, and we're comfortable with together, and it's a lot of work, but you know what? It'll be pay, it'll be work that'll pay us back.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, and I'm, I'm recommending that we go to the format that the district's moving to, so that we're aligning things with Dr. Boone and her staff, so that we all learn to read it the same. It's not gonna look exactly like this, because we know that we already discussed that we wanna be sure we get some of these things right, right to the page, so that we're matching it, and, and, because I wanted to look at the data charts, other people wanna look at the other things, and what we wanna do is get something that makes it a working, usable document for each member of the board, from the lens that we view things, which is not always the same, which is, the diversity on our team is, is one, is our, really our biggest strength, that we each are looking at this at a different way and focusing on different things. So, if we could do that, if it's okay with, with you.
If that is what, how, the direction everyone wants to go to, I'm fine. I know this is tedious and sausage-making, but this is how, and Dr. Gabriel or Mr. Jordan know. It's like, you know, yes, we're going through each one, but it's also a reminder to all of us, is this what, based on, you know, the data, a lot of this, we've, you know, as you said earlier, we've had presentations on already, we've gone through, we know, we could probably list off what we feel should be our high-focus areas. But if your, if your suggestion is for us to come back with recommendations.
Simply based on the time.
You know, go with.
Because we have, you know, we know that we have the hearing.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me ask the board this question first. How does the board feel about merging number five into number six? How does the board feel about that?
I know I'm not the board, but I'm part of the governor's team, I think we've already accomplished that.
Okay.
I think we spent the last about hour and fifteen minutes or so showing our agreement with that, 'cause I think otherwise it would've been derailed a while back.
Yeah, so now that we have that established, then, but sometimes you have to set the precedence for it, okay? So, we're all, we're all here. So.
Confirming.
Just confirming, is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, and so the next question, then, for you all, is I think the sausage-making is very important. And that's important.
You're not getting out of the sausage making.
No.
Oh, no, no, we'll take it out.
But what we also need to, what we need to, what we need to add on to that are, what are the board's responsibilities and our next steps? Okay, because we will need that for agenda planning, and we, and if you all want to, I'm very comfortable with having you all work on this, and then coming back, we need to know when we need to allocate the time for it, because this is time well-invested, I feel.
How, how about this, we have twenty minutes. If we could devote that twenty minutes to try and getting a little bit further along with the priorities, I think that that would help us as we start trying to meet with Dennis and Karen, and, and, and transition the stuff over, 'cause we can transition and get it on one document, and then, and still go back to our sausage-making and do revisions and edits and deletions and additions. It'll be here, and I think, then we won't be spending the time, I mean, that would be my suggestion for next steps. Let us take it, let us, let us work with them to get it all on the document, and then, we need to come back soon, because we wanna get this done, I mean, this start, this kicks in in September, but we need to have it ready ahead, so that the superintendent and her team can plan anything that needs to be done about PD and stuff like that.
My only thought is to caution, I mean, I'm saying this for ourselves, deleting anything or taking out anything that hasn't been agreed on yet.
I think we just redline it, we don't need to delete anything.
Exactly, yeah.
We are not gonna make any final decisions.
I'm just making sure that we're, yeah.
Yeah, and thank you for, for clarifying that, because we won't, we may redline some stuff, we may transfer it over and redline it as a recommendation, but it won't be gone.
So, Madam Chair, to support you and the Vice Chair, I would agree to having the committee go back and do some updates, including suggestions around priorities, and that the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Superintendent also look at the strategy around aligning the agenda in the work session, so we can keep in mind the many things that we already have on the plate.
So we can keep in mind the many things that we already have on the plate in addition to these new things and try to set a timeframe for, maybe you all can determine on the calendar.
Yeah.
When would be a good time for them to come back and then give them that date and they can work backwards from that date.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say that.
I like timelines.
So we give you a date, and then you guys work backwards from that.
But there's a, there's a lot on, there's a lot on the plate.
Yeah, there is, but it's gonna be work well spent.
Need a bigger plate? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're reducing the plate.
Maybe that's food.
I think chocolate on my plate or on my, over there. I, well, this is, we have a few minutes because I know we have to be out of here on time. Could we go back and do a little bit more work on the priorities?
I thought we were just turning it over to you.
Yeah.
Oh!
They're saying we can come back with the recommendations on it.
Cause I think we had robust discussion, I mean, from my input. I thought we had robust discussion when we won the priority section before.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, I, and...
So are you saying you...
We trust you to handle it.
Trust you to go with that and some back.
And you may get two different recommendations.
And you'll just redline it.
You just bring it up.
No, that's not allowed. You gotta, the committee has to come back with one recommendation.
For, for sake of...
The more we talk, the more we're, but the more we talk, the...
Thank you.
You all stay in the room.
Full cap. And we're working on closing our gap.
We're bridging the gap.
And I appreciate that. I just, yeah, I just wanna say, again, I think for sake of process, even as you talk about your personal interests or thoughts in this, but the idea of bringing back a single document, I think, would allow the board to vet the document with the input of everybody else around it.
Yeah.
And then we can begin to go forward and not...
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
Then I'll talk forever.
Well, now that, now that the full board's in agreement with that, we'll, we've got our charge.
And I guess tell us the date. Yeah. And if you have a homework assignment for us as far as suggestions for the priorities, and you send that to us, then we give it to you.
Right. Um, what I would, what I would recommend, or what I, what I would ask right now, and you chime in if you have anything to add, is that you do look at the identified needs in the document. Are there data points based on the data that you've reviewed that you want, that you feel is not included, or not included in a way that you think is more meaning, is the most meaningful way? Or things that you think are no longer relevant? And there are items in here that aren't relevant anymore, such as, you know, building.
Yeah. We're working on the five new schools. Hallelujah.
Build the five new schools so we can, we, we know that's the obvious.
Four and two-thirds.
Yes, four and two-thirds.
They moved into phase one. There's still, the old building has been demolished and they're building the phase two.
Oh, okay.
So we're four and two-thirds.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's...
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if it's one of the thing that, it doesn't have to be the next, uh, go-around, but if there's, if we can get some clarification of the role of the dashboard now, uh, because I'm, I like to get some sense, are we migrating these things online with scorecards and charts, or are we having twentieth century learning environments that is all gonna be on papers?
I think we're gonna do both, is what my, my recommendation would be.
Whatever.
Have it both ways.
Yeah, I'm just saying that because we have this investment and we've talked about that at some point, we want this to be available to the, to the public unless we're gonna produce a whole bunch of paper.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, that's not how I see it all.
No, no, whatever it is.
We put this, uh, the effort into getting this and simultaneously, once, you know, the, once they're comfortable with it, once they hear confirmation from the board, they're gonna be uploading the information. I mean, the data can already go up there because the data is the data.
I think, but most of it is. A lot of it is already up there. Some of it. We do. We need, we need some enhancements.
Now you got a direction.
Okay. Well, we have our charge.
We have agenda planning on January the thirty-first. And so, um, we can get you a date.
Yeah, I know.
Right. I'd like, I think we need you back in February. I think we do.
I, I, I wouldn't disagree, but don't forget, we have educational planning work that's coming back. Later part of February, early March will be the budget presentation. So I'm just saying, I'm not trying to push back. Just, these are some time sensitive, cause we have to get a budget to the City Council by April first.
How about if we do this? How about, um, asking anyone, if everyone, and when you said, well, could you do ahead, look at this? You know, make yourself not, you know, but at least look in, leaf through it and paperclip the pages that you see something you wanna come back and really look in depth, that might make you have a point that you don't feel we've seen. And, and you've got these two documents, you've got the, uh, the current, current plan, and look through those. And then if we could say, maybe by, you know, next Friday, you could email us or with, with an attachment of anything that you want us to look at as you're, as we're working on it, so we can include that. Um, and, and then maybe we can get a draft out before whatever set, whenever we are scheduled again, so that everyone's familiar with it and the discussion will, will, will be able to try and move our discussion along faster. Um, so, because I see exactly what Dr. Boone's saying. And we already know that we're having, we have so much that we're having trouble getting to it. So, so, and give us a time. You get an hour and that's it, you're out of here.
Yeah. And I, I also will, and reiterate, is that we right now are not, we are operating with an accountability plan. Okay? So the feeling, you know, I don't wanna still leave here feeling that we don't have one. We, we have... Well, I'm just, I'm just reiterating that right now, you know, agenda planning, all that, we're using, we're, what?
I said, we have one plan and two formats.
Right.
And, right.
Right, exact. That's a very good point.
But we have, we have an accountability plan that can, that is still, still should be used to guide, uh, agenda planning. And, um, we can...
And, and, and the superintendent's already said, she's, she's using the plan. She and her team are using the plan on a regular, ongoing basis with what they're doing.
Right, exactly. So...
I agree.
Yeah.
Great.
So, but I, I like the idea that we have one plan and two formats. But, but in a month, maybe we will have one format.
One format.
All right.
Dr. Boone, any?
Let it be said, let it be done.
All right. Um, I, I, um, let me just thank you all for the work that you have done. I... Make it so.
Yeah, make, make it so when you're getting together with us.
I really appreciate the dialogue that we've had, uh, this afternoon and the clear expectations that we have moving forward. So I, I appreciate the time that you all have put into it and the administration, Dr. Boone, allowing all of this to come forward so fluidly. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, well, uh, so just as a reminder for next week, we have our public hearing for...
Lake Taylor Middle.
Lake Taylor Middle School. It's gonna be on the early start times, uh, and the educational planning for Lake Taylor K-8 Middle.
Later start times.
Later, yeah. Later start times for high school, early start times for elementary school.
Just start time changes.
Start time changes.
Start times.